Okay, good evening and welcome to the Town of Wareham Board of Selectments meeting for February 9th, 2021. The meeting began at 6:30. We immediately went into negotiations, rather an executive session, to deal with contract negotiations with the Wareham Police Sergeants Union, and we're just coming back out now into regular session. Could we have another roll call, please?
Yes, all five selectmen are present, as well as Town Administrator Sullivan and Town Council Richard Bowen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, let's see. Do I see Mr. Well, it's a little tough getting people in from the outside. Alan, you're already standing.
Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. Through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Announcements, Alan?
We got released today from South Coast Health, the official release. I believe Derek's already got it up on the town website from that, so if people are looking to find out what it is, will be able to have it. The newspapers both have the release as well. I provided to them. And basically, again, Gleason YMCA for the Wareham area will be temporarily at least providing COVID shots, but please do not contact Gleason Y. All they're doing is providing space. They have nothing to do as far as the way it operates or anything else. South Coast Health controls all of it. The one requirement is you have to join my chat, which anybody can do, whether you're a South Coast patient or not. And what they will do is they will randomly pick on a 75 and older group to start with. You'll be, again, randomly chosen. You'll get your contact through email or phone, letting you know what your appointment is, et cetera. For this week, because of the limited number of vaccines available, which I believe is somewhere around 200 to 250, it will be starting tomorrow in the morning, and probably if they're efficient enough, they'll probably be done by afternoon. So it'll be one day. The facility in Dockmouth and the facility in Fall River, the same situation. Fall River started on Monday, New Bedford Dockmouth started today, and then will be tomorrow. I would hope that the following week we'll have more vaccines available than those with increase. This is an issue with all across the state. The only facilities with really large numbers is Springfield, Fenway Park, Gillette Stadium. There'll be one more, I think, up in the, up at the North Shore is going to be set up. There's really no major Southeast Mass setup except for Gillette Stadium. Just as a reference, I called on Saturday up to, like, and call, I just went on the email site for the, for the state. Processed through, it took me 12 minutes. I was able to get an appointment for this week coming on Friday with no issue at all. It is straightforward. If you make a mistake, you can hit a little back button and fix it. If you decide you want to cancel or reschedule, it's all available. It's pretty straightforward, so it does work, and there are still probably 1500 to 2000 openings for this week alone at Gillette, if you want to make the travel. That's it for now.
Thank you. Patrick?
I do want to, it's, I didn't realize last week that Selectman Slavin had scooped it and was announcing it at the right time, so I apologize for last week.
Is that a real apology?
That is a true apology.
Thank you.
Okay then. Patrick?
No, I'm good.
Jim?
Um, I'll dress it in liaison.
Okay, Judy?
Okay. The Council on Aging offers several programs in the community. In addition to the five-day-a-week Meals on Wheels program, the Council on Aging also offers twice-weekly pickup lunches. To reserve a Tuesday or Thursday lunch, you have to call 508-291-3130 the week prior to reserve your meal. That information is on the town's website. During, starting in March, the Council on Aging will have an AARP tax representative to help seniors with their tax preparation. Again, you must call to reserve a time, an appointment, and that number would be the 291-3130 again. Gleason Family YMCA is holding a food distribution event February 12th, starting at 11:00 a.m. until the food is gone, driving through the parking lot. Based on the last time they did it, the food has gone in an hour and a half, so get there quickly if you want to get the food. You simply drive into the parking lot, and the trunk of your car is loaded with the free food by volunteers. That's on the Gleason Y at 33 Charge Pond Road. The Y has also instituted a new food distribution program. The program started January 29th, and it is available Tuesdays and Thursdays. Fresh-prepared food will be distributed from 3:30 to 5:30 or until the food is gone. The program is open to children 18 and under. On Tuesday, the recipient will get three meals, and on Friday, four meals. These meals are meant to supplement the meals that are being provided by the school on a regular basis, Monday through Friday. Church of the Good Shepherd has food pantry the first Tuesday of every month from 3:00 to 5:00, and Thursday evening meals are available from 3:30 to 4:30. On Set Four Square Church is a soup kitchen every Tuesday from 4:30 to 6:00. And please pull up to the ramp to receive your meal. Other food programs that I've talked about before are on our website. What is really nice to see is that Wareham continues to be a very caring community and a generous community, and these programs are all meant to help those with food insecurity. A reminder that dog licenses are available at the town clerk's office. Most residents have received information about licensing their dog in the mail. You can complete the registration by mail, providing a self-addressed stamp envelope and a copy of your current rabies certificate, as well as the fee per dog. Spade dogs are 10 and non-spade are 13 through March 31st, and thereafter there are penalties. If you're age 70 or older, you can register one dog for free. One really important announcement. This is particularly for senior citizens who are targeted for these scams. If you get a call from the IRS, please hang up. It's a scam. If you get a phone call from your bank asking you if you made a purchase of such-and-such on your credit card, please hang up. Then call your bank and ask if there is a problem or disputed charge. If you get a call saying you're going to be arrested if you don't pay, please hang up. It is a scam. If you get an email from someone you do not know, or you do know, asking you to send him or her gift cards so they can, you know, get a birthday present for your nephew or niece, don't respond. It's a scam. Unfortunately, these types of scams are all too common, and people are victimized by them, continue to be victimized by them. Please, if in doubt, hang up. Don't respond. And the updated information, I just want to add to what Mr. Slavin said. Commonwealth of Massachusetts has also provided a hotline for COVID information. You dial 211 between the hours of 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. There are several hundred operators staffing that line. If you don't have a computer and you need to talk to a live person, this is the way to go. Dial 211. There are almost 100 language translators available at that time. And again, those opportunities to go to Gillette are probably the most available ones at the moment. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I just have one. Over on the Wareham Helping Wareham Facebook page, the page operator Brennan McKeeran has a post about feeding families on the 15th. He's looking to raise funding to purchase food for families, also possibly single people who are struggling as well. So that, again, he's kicking that off, so go and look at that link and see if you can help out there. I don't have anything further. We have citizens' comments next. Tonight, just for everybody's information, we're going to be reviewing proposals from the town administrator to provide some relief in response to some of the issues that we've been hearing from people about the trash program. And specifically, what we're going to be taking up under the trash disposal update later on in the meeting is the possibility of offering a senior discount to the transfer station. This is something that was done in the past. There's the possibility of discussing relief for the summer residents, those who may want trash service but may not want it year-round, and also those who would try to seek to opt-out because they have another means of disposing of their trash. And the final category that we will be discussing will be those who, full-time residents who are here, who do have actual provable other alternatives for trash. The way this is sort of being envisioned is set up like an abatement program. You would simply get the bill, and you would ask for it to be abated on a certain grounds. For the elderly, you know, there may be a discussion about an income qualification and so on and so forth. So before we get into a lot of comments from people, I just want to let everybody know that, you know, as we've gotten further into this process, we've realized two things. One is that we have the wiggle room to make some adjustments, and two is that it's clear that a fair amount of people do want adjustments. And of course, the balancing act for us is to do this while keeping the program financially, you know, solvent throughout the year, make sure we have the money to come in to pay, pay the freight, so to speak. So I just want people to know that. If people still would like to talk about the trash after hearing that, that's fine. My preference, I think, would be to wait until you hear what we have to say later on, and then if you still have questions or issues, hit us next week. But with that in mind, I will ask anybody who wants to address the board tonight, whether it's on the trash issue or any other issue, to use the chat function, send a message, identify yourself and what you'd like to talk about, and I'll just go down the list as they come in. And I will ask WCTV to sort of unmask you so that you're not muted, and we can see where you are, and you can tell us what's on your mind. So with that in mind, go ahead, and if anybody wants to address us, please use the chat function. And we'll wait a little while. Okay, we have Craig Gordon wants to speak on the trash issue, so if we could bring him forward, please?
Hello, everyone. I'm Craig Gordon. I'd like to, I'd like to speak on the trash issue from the standpoint of a full-time resident who has another means of disposal. I have a property out of town that I frequently go to, and so I'm just looking for some... You mentioned, you mentioned an abatement. That doesn't sound like, that doesn't sound like what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a complete opt-out, not just, you know, a little bit off my, my transfer station sticker. And plus, I do believe, just because this is a fee for a service, and I don't require the service, you really can't charge me for it if I don't require the service. It's not like my property taxes where there are a lot of things in there that I don't use, but because it's property taxes, then, you know, I have to pay it. This is a fee for a service, so I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that, that this is a whole different animal. And so could you please give me some guidance on, do I need to, you know, are you going to give, are you going to allow me to fully opt-out? Do I need to buy my transfer station sticker and hope for an abatement? Or whatever? So could you guys please, if you can, clarify that?
We'll be discussing those things during the meeting, Craig. I, I don't want to get into that and speak on behalf of everyone else because frankly, I don't know which directions the board is interested in going in. So I think it would be premature to address your points specifically, but we hear them. We know that, listen, you're not alone. We've heard the same thing from a bunch of people. That's why we're, you know, continuing to, you know, try to make this work for more people. And if that means, you know, letting a few people out of the program or whatever, what have you, then those are the things we're going to be looking at, but I just don't want to get too far out ahead of the conversation we haven't had yet.
Just, just let me know what I need to do so that I don't get penalized.
Yep, we understand.
Okay, that, all right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I see, let's see, Meg Sheehan was next. I guess the question I would have for Meg is to tell me if you're a Wareham resident or not, because it is citizens' comments, and we do limit the comments to residents of the town.
No, I am not a resident, and I appreciate your position and would waive my opportunity to comment if that's appropriate.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, I personally, I don't know about the other members, but I've seen your comments on Facebook. I think, I know, I know what you're looking for here. And just for everybody's knowledge, because unfortunately Meg can't speak to the issue, there is concern about some of the solar project properties that are being, you know, in the permitting process with the planning board. The AD Makepeace Company has chosen to take them out of what's called 61A, which is basically cheap forest land taxation, and put them into a regular tax category. Under state law, the town has the right to try to buy those properties if they give the landowner notice within a month. So when we get these requests from a company like AD Makepeace, they go out to the land trust, they go out to the Open Space Committee, I believe possibly also Conservation Commission, I'm not 100% sure, but they go out to town boards that have an interest in conservation and so on and so forth. And they make recommendations to us one way or another. It might say, yeah, you know, maybe this is a property you want to protect, or no, we have no interest. We're in that process now, so what I'm guessing is Meg was looking to advocate for a certain position in regard to that. And I guess that's probably where I should leave it right now, but thank you very much, Meg.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's see, we have something from JE. It doesn't look like a question per se. This person is asking to push the deadline off. Let's see. We did push the deadline off until the 15th. I don't know if it's going to be pushed off further. But, you know, it's, it wasn't, it didn't expire yesterday. We did continue it at least for another week. So I think that addresses that person's concern. Let's see. Who else do we have? Oh, Dan Brossi. Could we unmask Dan and speak to him? Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
My, my video didn't come up even though I hit the button, so I'm not sure.
Oh, we see you.
Okay, okay. Well, I can't see you, so. My name's Dan Brossi. I'm in 43 Riverside Drive. My concern when I called ABC, I was going to transfer over, was the amount of weekly trash that I generate. And they really couldn't give me an answer what would happen with the overflow. My biggest concern would be my recycle. I have two 90-gallon recycles that I pretty much fill every week. So my question is, how will that be handled? Well, how should I handle that? Do I have to take it to the dump?
You know, that's an interesting one. I know that, you know, we've looked into additional trash barrels for people who need additional trash barrels. But truthfully, you're the first good citizen who's come up and said, "I recycle a lot more than I do anything else." So I don't think we have an answer for you at the present time, but that's something that certainly we can discuss later in the meeting. People are going to have some different circumstances here, so that, you know, we understand there has to be a way to try to, you know, deal with your volume and not just have, you know, a flat volume for everybody, because in the real world, people are going to have more in some instances. But I'm going to make a note here, so to bring it up later in the meeting, so I can ask the town administrator about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. I'll actually, whoever JE is, could we unmask them? Because they've got an additional concern or question here I think we need to address, or at least here.
Sorry, I just, I'm, we're in the same situation that Dan is, and we've been calling every week to both municipal maintenance and ABC, trying to get an answer on if we need more than one trash bin. Right now, we have 196 trash and 296 recycling, and they are generally full. And what are we supposed to do? And the 15th, you know, while I appreciate that we got an extra week, the town still doesn't have any other information, and how can we make a decision about whether we're going to opt-in to curbside or opt-out? If I have to go to the dump anyway, why on earth would I also pay for curbside? You know, it's not fair to ask us to make a decision when you don't, you can't answer our questions about what this program is really going to look like.
Okay, fair enough. I'd ask you to, you know, stay tuned through tonight. You know, hopefully we can get to that, the trash, fairly quickly, and, you know, maybe get some more information out there.
Can I ask a question to the speaker, Peter?
Sure, go ahead.
Do you have to pay extra for those additional bins and hoppers that you get?
We have 196 trash, and that is what we pay for, the additional recycling bins. We did not, there was a deposit to get the bins, but we don't pay extra for the, for the pickup.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else with a question or a concern? I'll give it about 30 seconds and see if anybody else pipes in here. I don't see anybody waiting. Okay, see, there's Janice who's making the observation. She says she has no need for trash pickup or use for the transfer station. I think Janice falls into a category with some other people, and that's one of the things we will be discussing tonight. So I would, I would ask Janice to bear with us, listen to what's going on later. That's not in the, just so people understand, that's just going to be an internal discussion with the board and the town administrator. It's not a public hearing or anything like that. But, you know, again, we've been, we've been getting, we've been getting quite a few phone calls, quite a few emails, people stopping us in the grocery store and asking about this. So the areas I discussed earlier before we went to the comments, you know, that's going to be on tonight. Let's see, we have Annie Hayes on the right of First Refusal under 61A, so could we unmask Annie, please?
Good evening. Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about our natural world and the degradation that I see. I've lived in Marion, Fairhaven, born in New Bedford, and I've been here for four years. I own the old Florindo farm. That's, I, my intention is to put it in conservation to connect with Westgate and Farring Hill. And I'm new to this conversation, so I don't mean to belittle anybody's knowledge. I have a lack of background. But in the last couple of meetings I've been to, one on the planning board and one on the Conservation Commission dealing with this issue, the planning board was waived because of a lack of participants. I don't mean the community, but the, the members. And I don't hear climate crisis on the table. So I'm not assuming that we don't all know about it, but I think that it has to be on the table. It has to be in the conversations because our natural world, which is our life, it's not just our recreation. Sometimes it's talked about as if it's a place to walk in, but it's our oxygen, it's our life's blood, it's the water that makes up most of our body, et cetera. I'm sure you all know the biology, and it's threatened everywhere. I've seen so many houses built in this town, and I don't mean to sound like I'm being adjorative, but in Wareham and across, you know, the South Coast and the country, actually, that clear-cut, and I sit there in my car and I count the trees that are, that are eliminated for a house and the habitat and the ecosystem and the forests that have been taken down. You know, I just think that we all have to be on high alert when we see proposals for deforestation for solar. It is not a binary choice. It's not solar or forests. It's all of them. And the positioning of solar systems, I have put three in myself, so I'm a proponent, but the positioning has got to be in places that do not, not destroy our natural world. And I'm wondering, let me go to the corporation part. I'm sure there are benefits that Makepeace, am I still in? I don't see myself on the screen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm sure that through its over 100 years of being in our town, Makepeace has contributed to many things. In fact, it's been a land preserver over the years because it was growing crops and using the land and caring about the land, although cranberries are one of the greatest pesticide users, and there are issues with that. But it's a corporation, and its mandate is to its shareholders. And that really is maybe not antagonistic necessarily, but in direct conflict with your representative body, the townsfolk's interest as people concerned with the, with the common good and the, oh, darn it, sustainability, sorry. The sustainability of our natural world, we have to sustain it. And as an ocean community, a community that is, I don't know if they own a sixth of the town of Wareham, but they certainly own a vast stretch of our natural world, and they're selling it off in chunks. So I want to know if you've looked into the funding that would make purchase possible, the bog restoration that people are doing on the Cape that has monies from the state. There's, Bill Strauss has introduced in this session, I think, as well as last, bog, I'm sorry, wetlands banking, and that's converting bogs to wetlands and then banking it so that the, the town can use that when there are projects that necessitate some intrusion, I guess, in, in wetlands. So I think there are just a lot of things that towns independently and regionally can do to really grapple with this issue, because there's a gold rush on solar systems with support from the state, et cetera.
I kind of have to jump in here because we do have a two-minute rule on this.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I think, I think we understand that there's, you know, there are different, there are multiple different equities at play here. I think is the best way I can characterize it. We send these things out to our, you know, we don't even really discuss them until they come back, and it's time to put it on the agenda and decide whether to, you know, pursue property under the 61A or whether to just let whatever transaction is about to take place go ahead. We wait until we hear back from our boards. We received the letter on January 26th, the 61A notification letter from the AD Makepeace Company. So we have another couple of weeks with which to wait for comment to come in and, you know, before we put it on an agenda and actually make a decision. So thank you very much. Thank you very much for what you've brought forward, including the information about Representative Strauss's bill. Let's see. Somebody's asking if you are going to be speaking with the town administrator about the trash topic. When and how will all options be shared with the community? Well, first off, I'm sure the media will be reporting. We always have two reporters at our meeting. They both do a pretty good job of getting out what was, what was discussed and what was decided. When, when the information is available, when we do make decisions whether to... When, when the information is available, when we do make decisions whether to change the trash program or not, any changes will be put up on the town website, we'll get them out to social media. I would assume at some point there may be another mailing, although I think the town administrator probably just cringes at the cost of the postage again. So we will man, we will get the word out to you about, about what's going on here. So thank you for that inquiry, because it'll come from a multitude of sources, the information, once we have it available. And I think we're good here with the citizens' comments, board comments. I'll go to Alan. You gotta turn on your mic, Alan.
I apologize, I'm a little tired today. I've had seven hours of Zoom conference calls, so a little groggy.
Can I interrupt for one second? There's a woman.
Go ahead, Jim.
There are hand raised, Amimi, tomorrow. Yeah, they, they used a little symbol.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Let's have Mimi on. Sorry, I didn't see her.
It's fine.
Hi, thanks for taking me on. I'll be a second home for us. We do spend the summer from May to October in Wareham, and I think as an advocate for those of us who pay, you know, full-time taxes but have part-time use, and don't have the ability to attend town meeting because we're not our primary residents, I'd appreciate it if you would consider a May to October service and a hiatus over the wintertime. I think it's reasonable. Thank you.
Peter, you're muting, are you muted?
Yeah, I know. WCTV keeps doing it to me.
They just love you.
Apparently. That means they'll talk less. Going ahead, Alan.
Okay, just a quick comment for a couple people that made some comments. The Conservation Commission, the Land Trust, and I believe the Planning Board, as of last night, have decided to work together to come up with some new solar bylaws because of the issues, especially with the one-forty to-hundred projects, which has stirred up a lot of concern, et cetera. And I believe Conservation met, but they didn't have a quorum, so they can't write a letter yet. Open space met, and they'll be writing letters asking the town to actually take their right for the sixty-one A. I'm not sure how we ever go ahead and buy land, but they're gonna be asking the town to do that, just so you know. And as far as that goes there, the, I've had another comment, you know, but we have businesses that really suffered, whether they were in Phase Four, Phase Three, you know, Two or Three, about what happens for the coming year, and I'm working, I'll talk a little bit later, about what the state may or may not be doing, because as an example, Water Whiz is Phase Four. Right now, there's a possibility they would have to close for a second year, and financially, that would be a disaster for any business. So we're, we're looking at that as well. I have some other stuff. I'll try and do it when we get into the other reports.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
No, I'll, I'll hold off. Thanks.
Jim? Need your mic on, Jim.
I'll piggyback on what Alan said related to the Planning Board. They, they continued the, the hearing on the recreation and entertainment overlay for another week. There was a number of people speaking on possible other alternatives for funding or preservation. Also, they brought up the point of the extended time due to COVID. In our timeframe, I believe, would be, is it a hundred and twenty days from notification? And then, to give an answer, and then with the COVID and extension over that, if we, if we're taking into consideration any of these alternatives. I just wanted to bring that out at this point in time. And also on the recreation and entertainment overlay, it was another lively discussion. And again, the solar bylaw, some citizens were bringing up something, and, and the Planning Board did discuss that they would be taking that up possibly for the coming town meeting, if not a, a later date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Judy? Microphone, please.
I'm also, thank you.
Yeah, further with regard to the, you know, the, the whole solar thing. I think it was about three years ago, I actually asked the board if they were interested in trying to do a solar bylaw study committee. This is in response when people were upset with what happened along Toby Road, which of course went in as of right, because that's owned industrial, and solar is considered an industrial use, so you, you weren't gonna stop that from happening. And at the time, you know, it didn't seem like there was, there was much interest in, in doing that. I don't know, maybe that's something we can put on when we talk about warrant articles, see if we wanna, you know, get the ball rolling on it. I do think it's, you know, responsible long-term to try to look at, you know, putting solar, in, in some areas at least, to try to take some of the pressure off the environment over places like parking lots, buildings that have strong enough roofs that you can put stuff on, although I understand a lot of buildings don't, and they have to be retrofit. But I mean, this, this is how, really, to me, it, it requires a long-term look, rather than just looking at one or two projects or three projects and saying, well, we don't like this, or we don't like that, we don't like the other thing. You know, the state and the federal government push this stuff like you wouldn't believe, and that's why this, it's a boom industry, because they, they give it a lot of tax breaks, they give it a lot of credits and so on and so forth, make financing easier. So, you know, this is the, sort of the mandate that comes down from on high to us, but we do have some right and responsibility to manage it at the local level, so that's something I think I'll be bringing up again for the board to consider, once we open up the warrant. Don't have anything else? Appointments, reappointments and interviews. We have some, some faces here to appoint. Judy, you need your mic on?
Is Leslie Davis present? You see her, Peter?
I'm scanning. No, I do not see Leslie, but, you know, one of the things here is people who have, some just show up as phone numbers. Leslie, if you're here, we'll give you a little bit, use the chat function, let me know, and I'll ask the TV station to unmask you.
As I recall, she was gonna be late because of work. I'm not.
Oh, that, is that the one? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's.
Then why don't we, then why don't we?
Okay.
Circle back to that, we'll go back to that, when she, when she does show up, we'll.
Okay. Michael Mercier?
Can't see him.
Yep, I see him.
Good.
You do see him.
Yeah, he's at the bottom of my screen.
If I can find him. Well, anyway, go, go ahead then.
Okay, Michael Mercier, the Conservation Commission has recommended that Michael Mercier be booted up, not booted up, moved up, full-time member with an expiry date of June of twenty-three. So I make the motion that Mr. Michael Mercier be elevated to full member of the Conservation Commission with the term to expire no later than June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Judy and a second by Patrick. So Mr. Mercier is here, I can't see him. Do we want to let him speak and talk about his time on the Conservation Commission and his interest in becoming a full member?
If he's, I see him, but I don't know if he wants to speak.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm not seeing him either.
Me neither.
Okay, then.
That is one, where we've got people visible to some people, but not others.
I, I know he did write to the board.
Yes.
About his interest in moving from the associate to full-time. He'd been an associate previously, and took a job, and he conflicted with his board meetings, and changed the job, and he came back to the board. His application, if I remember correctly, you know, was for a full, full member originally. And as far as I'm concerned, if the Conservation Commission has recommended him, took the vote and recommended him, I'm in favor of moving him on to the board.
As a comment, Alan, Peter, I've watched some of the conservation meetings, and I think he's done a very good job.
Good. Okay, well, after all these favorable reviews, we have a motion from Judy and a second from Patrick. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Mr. Mercier, if you're indeed out there, give it a couple of days. The paperwork will be available in the Selectman's Office, and from there, you will go down and get sworn in by the clerk. Call, you'll need to call the Selectman's Office to make an appointment, though, because we're still appointment-only at Town Hall, so. Judy, perhaps if you could get an email out to the gentleman tomorrow to let him know this?
Yes, I actually would suggest that they don't come in until next week because of the staffing issues that we're having right now.
Okay.
The next person to be recommended for a full membership on the Conservation is Kwame Barty. Is he here?
I don't see him.
I don't see him. I make a motion to appoint Kwame Barty to a full member of the Conservation Commission to a term to expire June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion to appoint by Judy, seconded by Alan. Anything further?
For me, the same thing is with Mercier. I've been watching both, and they both are doing a very good job.
Yeah, I recall they both had pretty, pretty good resumes that, you know, would jive well with that kind of seat. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. And we'll, we'll see if Ms. Edwards, Ms. Edwards-Davis shows up later in the meeting.
Okay.
Licenses and permits, Jersey mics.
Yes, we have an application from Mass Subs to LLC DBA Jersey mics, twelfth Seth F. Toby Road, Wareham, for a common vic license. All of the paperwork is in order, and therefore I make a motion that we grant the license.
We'll have to wait till the background stops. Okay, good, thank you. So we have a motion by Judy. Do we have a second?
Second by Alan.
Seconded by Alan. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. And you'll be letting them know that the paperwork's good, Judy?
Yes.
I believe their, their grand opening is tomorrow.
Yeah. Maybe you can run it down to Judy, get a sub.
We're all gonna get subs tomorrow. You have to pay, of course.
Yeah. Okay.
Welcome you all in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, COVID-nineteen update. Do we have anything, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me pull up the numbers real quick.
Yep.
I came in a different way. As of Sunday, February seventh, we still see some decrease in cases, so we're up to only forty-four new confirmed cases. And that's, that's much better than the spike, but you still, people have to realize that's still not great. So we have one reported death this week as well, so we've had twenty deaths in the last two months. So the total cases since March twenty-twenty for the town have been twelve-hundred-and-twenty-four.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's better than, what, five percent?
Yeah, of the year-round population, because we wouldn't be, they would only report to us if it's their primary resident.
Right. You know, once again, you know, there's a reason, there's a reason people get it, and that's because they're exposed to it. And the best thing you can do is wear the mask, wash your hands, you know, avoid large gatherings, you know, try to stay within your family unit. More and more people are getting vaccinated. It would be nice if we could hit the federal government's goal of getting everybody done by the end of the summer. I don't know if that's realistic or not, but in the meantime, you, you just keep doing the things that have kept you safe so far, and, you know, try to be considerate of one another. Trash disposal update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So going through this, you know, we've had some, some abatement requests, some other opt-outs, and it's just all phrased in a different manner. So hearing the Board of Selectmen, the first one I heard last week that was of importance was the senior, was qualifying seniors. Now, the age ranges I've seen from other communities are sixty-five to seventy, so that's one of the first things you'll need to decide. And then most of them have some sort of income qualification. For example, they would do the, much like what we do with the senior work-off, you do the front page of the ten forties. Anybody that's qualified for the circuit breaker tax, and also some other communities, if you're part, if you're eligible for the forty-one C elderly persons, that's age sixty-five or above, and that's based on income and assets. I asked the, right now, the Director of Assessing, Jackie Nichols, how many persons are qualified under that forty-one C, and that's a hundred and thirty-six persons in the community.
Questions, comments on the board? Alan?
No, I'm looking at the town of Pembroke pieces that were sent to us a little while ago for abatement, so discounts, whatever, all over the place. My feeling, and that's my feeling only, is that we've got a lot of stuff to go over and think about, and it's gonna take more than just this meeting to do it. I think we're gonna have to look at the actual costs. You know, that's not there, because I asked about income level as far as, you know, discounts and all, and there were some people that complained that they thought using an income level was kinda crazy, whatever else, but I'm looking at what Pembroke does, and they use the income leveling for almost everything. And when we get the checks from the government, that was all based on income levels as well, you know, stuff. So we're gonna have to decide how we're gonna base this, which is in itself very difficult. The plan has to basically pay for itself. If not, you may have to go and ask the town for, which is the most harmful word, we have to put out a Selectman right now and override to pay for things. So I'm really not crazy about trying to make a decision time if people are expecting us to do that.
I don't, I don't know that we are in a position, because, you know, we're, we're having these things introduced to us, so I think we need time to reflect upon them and have additional discussions, you know, individually with the town administrator, to try to, to work things out, so.
Thank you, let me just, let me finish. Yeah, just let me finish. All I'm trying to get at is that we've probably got hit with at least thirty different variations that people have, and it's, I think it's virtually impossible to make everybody happy. We just have to come up with what the best for the majority is and do the best we can with it. It's a system where, you know, we had a great program, it was almost for the transfer station. The easiest thing in hindsight would have been to say, you know, January first, everybody's on their own. But the bottom line was, we had a lot of people who insisted they wanted the transfer station retained, and Mr. Unice did a great job on that end. It's the Sullivan that picked up and tried to put a program together, and it's very much like the Onset Parking Program. It's all done in good faith, but there's just so many glitches in it that I like when this goes forward, just do it as best we can. I don't, I don't wanna rush and make a rash decision on anything. Thank you.
Patrick?
Yeah, no, this is a, this is a difficult road. And I have a sneaky suspicion that no matter what we do, and come up with in the end, that we're going to have people complaining about it one way or the other. And, you know, every. And, you know, everybody has to look at it, everybody looks at it a different, from a different angle, whatever it happens to be. I look at it from the angle that, you know, frankly, two barrels is nowhere near enough for my house. So, you know, that's an issue for me. And so I have to think about how I will handle it anyway. As it turns out, that I'm quite often in another facility and I can take and pay to take it to another place. And, and I pay extra money, I end up going over to Bourne and I get weighed on the scale and I run my trash through there and, you know, it is what it is. But, but, you know, I also understand, being in business, how difficult it is now to get rid of trash. You know, a lot of times you come up with stuff that they, nobody will take, I mean, literally nobody. I did a thing one day and there was some, there was some Creosote railroad ties that had been cut up and so on and so forth, and no one would take it, literally no one. And, you know, that's, that's a problem in general, you know, if you know what I'm saying, I mean, stuff that doesn't go. So it's not even a matter of, okay, if we solve this and everybody's getting their trash and can take stuff to whatever, there's still gonna be a lot of stuff that they can't get rid of. And that's the kind of world we're living in right now, it's very difficult.
Yeah. So. Um, as, let me see, Jim, on the senior question.
On the senior question, um, well, I, I've had some opportunity to reply to a lot of the emails that the Selectmen received and had some discussion with Town Administrator Sullivan. And, um, it, you know, it's, it's a income issue as much as anything and the affordability of it. So we're not just looking, at least I'm not just looking at an age qualification, but also considering people who may be at extremely low income, who are homeowners, homeowners, not someone who's renting a home from someone else. And, you know, we're taking everything into consideration, like you say, the financial impact, I, I don't believe the number is that great of which Mr. Sullivan said, the number of people qualified as senior discounts, was it a hundred and something, Mr. Sullivan?
It's going to depend on your income limits, we know that there is for certain a hundred and thirty-six.
Right.
There's two hundred and sixty-five below the poverty level estimate from, given from some of the, the census.gov data with a plus or minus a hundred and nineteen margin of error. But, you know, not all those could be residential homeowners, they could be mobile homes and such.
And I want, I want to say he's, he's a good number cruncher and I'm sure we'll have good information to base our decisions on, thank you.
Thank you, Judy, on the senior discount question.
Yeah, yes. I think that I agree with the previous speakers in terms of, I would like to know the total impact of any decisions that we make. I think the, you know, if we look at a hundred and thirty-six people, we may think that's not very many people. But if there are two hundred and sixty-five seniors in this town living below the poverty level, that's something that very much bothers me. Ignore the trash issue. So I, I would like to pursue figuring out how we do that, if we can do it. And I guess I had a question for Mr. Sullivan, these people would all be residents, but are they homeowners necessarily? Or could they be possibly residents of a mobile home park? Or an apartment complex or something?
No, because those weren't included in the program.
Okay, so they never would, no, but the numbers from Ms. Nichols, do they include people who live in those other circumstances?
No, in order to qualify for the tax residential homeowners tax exemption, you'd have to be a residential homeowner.
Okay, thank you, I'm all set, Mr. Channel bomb.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, getting outside of the numbers, I, I agree with Jim, I, I think, you know, age and income, I think those are the, the two things we need to look at. You know, and I, my personal feeling is, you know, social security keeps pushing the age out, everybody else keeps pushing the age out. I would like to see it set at sixty-five personally, but that's, that's, you know, that's gonna be something we decide going forward. But I would like to see it set at sixty-five, I noticed the Pembroke form says seventy. You know, what is old age, I don't know, I'm sixty-one, I'm feeling pretty old, so. You know, I, I think that's something we need to consider. And with the poverty numbers, I think that the, the more people of, you know, older people we, we can capture and assist, I think that's our first priority. And I would, I would suggest we, we would start at sixty-five, but that's something to talk about further when we get the numbers from Derek. What's the next category, Derek?
So let's go continue with senior and two things real quick. If you're expecting me to give you the exact numbers of what's going to happen, that's an impossibility, so.
No, we understand that.
I can give you the best ranges on what we've seen from who's signed up so far and from some of the input. So just, I just want to make that clear, I think, I know you understand it, but I think, just want to make sure that's out there. Now, what we need to also factor in is what are the cost reductions? So looking at it, my recommendation would be, first off, when looking at the curb side, if they wish to do curb side, one of the things we receive from the seniors, especially the ones that are low income, is that they are very low producers of trash. So you can instantly reduce the estimated solid waste cost in half, I would say, very easily, which would be a sixty-dollar reduction. Further, this would be putting money at, more at risk, if you will, then. By risk, I mean, that's a cost from the, on the overall project, if that makes sense. I would do, we're looking at additional sixty dollars, so that would be a total of a hundred and twenty-dollar reduction for curb side to be two hundred and forty-five dollars for seniors. Then the transfer station, transfer station, the sticker is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Any reduction of that, because when you look at it, the transfer station sticker cost is the cost for the operations. And then the trash is the trash, is the cost for disposal. So in a way, if you are a low disposer, you're already giving yourself a reduction, if that makes sense. However, I think the, I'm trying to understand people's needs, you cut that transfer station sticker in half at sixty-two fifty. It is an odd number, I understand, but a fifty percent reduction is what makes sense.
Okay, questions on the board, Alan?
No, I think I made my point pretty clear, I, I went off a little bit subject to all the areas and, you know, that, to me, there's no change at all until we figure out where we're gonna go. I mean, there's just so many different ways we can go in each one as you go down the line, you know, as far as what you're gonna answer, so. We're gonna have to come up some common thread that works out all the way through.
Okay, Patrick?
Uh, this is gonna be a nightmare to deal with. If we're going to, you know, sort of try to work every scenario, it's going to be like an impossibility. So in my opinion, we have to come up with some reasonable numbers, give some of the reasonable discounts, figure that some of these people are gonna get abatements based on, you know, whatever their use is. And I, I made a suggestion, I, I know you guys probably didn't hear, but I made a suggestion that if a seasonal user turns off the water at their house, they would notify you that the water is turned off and when it gets turned back on and you adjust their money based on how many months they're there. If they were there two months and the water was turned off from, from one month to another, you make that adjustment accordingly. Uh, because obviously they wouldn't be putting any solid waste of any kind into the system. So that's, you know, I'd say that we're gonna have to look at all that stuff, but we gotta do it quickly.
Okay, Jim?
We're on the seniors, so I think Mr. Sullivan has made some pretty good recommendations and we should think about them and he can give us, hopefully, some, I, I think his estimates are probably pretty, pretty good and, you know, I, I think we're moving in a good direction and there's some, there's some some themes to which most of the issues are being brought up. And those, we can't, like you said, we can't address everything, but there's main themes and those, I think, is what we will address, thank you.
Yeah, Judy?
Um, I just wanted to point out that seniors who choose curb side would also be entitled to a dump sticker. Is that correct, Mr. Sullivan?
Correct, yes.
Yes, okay, so they, that would cost them an additional amount if they chose to try the sticker route first, but then they decided they would go to seniors, that sixty-two fifty would be deducted from, or the, whatever amount we came up with would be deducted from the curb side cost. Just want to make that clear.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anything else with regard to senior or are we good for the next category?
No, next category, move on, it's to the senior, excuse me, geez, seasonal homeowner. Move on to that. You know, there's, and again, moving to the, the first, one of the things with the implementation of this program was trying to figure out the direction people were going to go in, we had our best estimates and, but, you know, you can never tell until really what's going to happen. So our hope had been to, our desire had been moved forward with one year, here are the recommendations. But like I said, we've, we have that a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar delta which will be eaten up quickly. I think everybody needs to realize that, so, but just getting to the seasonals. We don't have the capabilities, especially billing wise and such, to turn it on and turn it off at a, at a weekly, monthly, monthly notice. Part of this is for, especially for the curb side, is that that vehicle is going by that house. You know, no matter what, and there's a set cost. So there's also, so we're trying to figure out how to make it work for the seasonals. I, I understand, I used to have a seasonal home, when I bought the transfer station sticker, there was no, there, there was no reduction for, for being seasonal, but I can understand people's concerns. So I would recommend we follow a similar tack to the, to the, what we did with the seniors. One being seasonal would be representative, and I think the timeframe, which you can move a month here or a month there, but on a six-month timeframe, you're probably looking at April 1 till September 30th. I know I'll instantly hear somebody saying, well, I'm here May 1 till October 30th, or I'm not there. We can't hit every single option. So let's take it as a six-month timeframe. If you do a six-month timeframe, you do exactly what the, the same thing as we talked about with the seniors, you can cut the solid waste in half. I'm not going to play the estimate game of, oh, in the summer you might have more guests, so you'll yield more trash. We, we just can't go down the rabbit hole. So I, this is talking about curb side, I would go with the sixty-dollar reduction for the, the, that, the solid waste portion. And then we would put an additional sixty-dollar at risk as well, that'd be two hundred and forty-five dollars for a curb side program. That's eligible from April 1 to September 30th. Next would be the transfer station. Now, again, we need that transfer station, we have to have the capacity to take people. But again, I understand their, their thoughts and concerns. There, and there's gonna be two parts to this. One, when we originally had the two transfer stations through CMW, Marion took Benson Brook was the Sunday. We continued on normal operations of the Rochester site, which was, which were the same exact dates as we, days of the week as we have now. We are working to try and see if we can move those days around to incorporate Sundays, I understand them, I hear you. If you're, if you're a weekend person and you're leaving back home on a Sunday, it, it doesn't make sense if you can't go to the transfer station on that day. I cannot guarantee that instantly. We have to negotiate a few things with, with employees, DEP and, and the site as well. But that's our goal and I think it makes sense. And once you make a change, I don't think we should flop back and forth between a, between a summer and a winter days. I think we keep one set schedule, I'd like to try and keep it so that it's, it would be Thursday through Monday. So there might be some people coming, leaving on Mondays as well. Now, the other part of that is, you, you know, if we're going to, I think we can reduce that transfer station sticker for, for seasonal down to the half price as well. I hear what people are saying. You know, it's going to be, I, I think it makes sense and they're only utilizing that for part of the year. And it might be that we have to increase some staffing during that, that part of the year and that's covering some of the cost. So again, we wanted a full year to try and really figure out what the, what, what our seasonal changes would be, but we're, you know, obviously it's a policy decision for the Board of Selectmen to make, but my understanding is you've, you've received a lot of input, so.
That we have, Alan?
No, I, I don't feel as though it's necessary for me to make any more comments going down the line, I think I've made everything I have to at this point.
Okay, Jim?
No, again, we, we don't work in a vacuum and had a lot of discussion with Mr. Sullivan, he's given a lot of thought and a lot of input and there's some themes that are, he's addressing and I want to thank him, that's all.
Good, Patrick?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm all set, there's not much to say, I think we've said it all.
Judy?
I just would have a question about, and it would be a, a guesstimate, obviously, about how many properties we're talking about, Mr. Sullivan, do you have any idea at all?
Actually difficult, because you can't just run a personal property report, because, just because it's your second home doesn't mean it's a seasonal home. We've heard from other persons already that own multiple homes in the community. You know, I, we've estimated around two thousand. I know that ABC had two hundred and eighty people that they serviced seasonally, and I believe some other of the haulers used to, used to have people seasonally, so I had estimated that five hundred people would stay with the seasonal curb side program and that we would have another two hundred seasonal transfer station.
Thank you, I, that, that's important information, thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything further on the seasonal, which I guess brings us to the final.
Yeah, so we, yeah, I think it started off, I first, I spoke to a gentleman on the phone, he was a single father out of Wareham, Lake Shores, and he had an alternative way of getting rid of his trash. Then we started hearing from some person since, that they also were able to get rid from their own business or the business they worked for. We have a lot of people that work for CMAS and, you know, not unsurprisingly, one of the benefits they afford the employees is that they are allowed to get rid of their trash there for, for, looks for no cost, so. I understand what they've been speaking about, we've heard a few people, some of the seasonal homeowners that take their, take their trash home back to, as the furthest I've heard so far is Revere. So I think the, the email we received from the gentleman in Rochester's been the closest so far, but, yeah. So, looking around at some of the, some of the other communities, they call it a, it's basically a abatement for other means of disposal. Now, this would mean, what they usually routinely do is, if you're a business owner, if you're going to your business, you know, you'd need to send us your contract that you have the hauling and such as part of the abatement. If it's, you're, if you're where you're employed, you would need a letter from the, from the business. And this isn't something we're coming up with. This is what we've seen in several communities. So, and if you're a, if you're a homeowner in another community, this is your seasonal home, you don't want to go to the transfer station, you want to bring trash home in your car in ninety-degree weather, let's, you know, just let us know that you, you have it. You know, I remember Selectman Whiteside really admonishing me about, about the stinky clam shells. So, you know, I was surprised to, you know, I can understand some people, you know, they've got a routine or, you know, every, and once, many of them have told us how long they've, they've gone through this routine with their families. So, the third one is an abatement for that as other means of disposal. What is that? So, the gentleman asked earlier, is that a, is that, well, he didn't say this exactly, but is that ten dollars off? Is it fifty percent off? That would be a full abatement that you are not, that you would be, not, not be charged or for anything if you have other means. Now, what we, we can't have is people saying, all right, my neighbor's got these paying for the curbside, I'm going fully opt out, we're going to split it and stuff like that. That's one of the reasons why you have the, there's proof of other places. One of the concerns we do have is commercial dumpsters at residential properties for, for a long term. In other words, almost as permanent fixtures, but that's, that's something we'll, we'll have to handle moving forward. So we, we've heard people that they have other alternative measures and that those don't necessarily make sense for, for them.
Okay. Alan says he's all set. Patrick?
I'm all set.
Jim?
This is all good. Is there, is there any, an additional topic you're going to discuss on this, Mr. Sullivan?
I had been asked earlier about the additional, additional cans or, you know, the totes, if you will. And first, I'd like to, I think you said it Chairman Titlebaum, salute the ones for recycling. That's fantastic. So, that's, they're doing a great job. We have a quote for, and this I think should, should really make them, will make some people think. And each additional sixty-four gallon container for the solid waste for trash would be ninety-five dollars. How does that come about? Well, we, we'd, since ABC owns the cans, it's, it's ten dollars and then the, it costs us about seventy-eight dollars a ton for solid waste disposal. And that's, so you're looking at it, that with the sixty-four gallon, you can go, you can go slightly over a ton annually on it. So that's what had come up with the ninety-five. The other item is the recycling. Recy, this is, in hearing the gentleman's using recycling containers, two of them weekly, I think I need to remind everybody that recycling pickup is bi-weekly. We would not have an option for weekly pickup. If you're doing another bin, it, the recycling bins are ninety-six gallons, so they're roughly fifty percent larger than the sixty-four gallon, or they are fifty percent. Recycling through ABC right now is about eighty-five dollars a ton. It's a little bit more than, than trash. So you're looking with just the variance. And ironically, so ironically, recycling's lighter than trash. So, even though it's a much bigger tote, you'd be looking at a ten-dollar difference at about a hundred and five for the, each additional recycling container. And why, why are there the costs? We pay directly for all the, we're charged for the bin and then we're, we pay directly for all those costs. So, in hearing for some of them, it may make sense to do the curbside if you, with those bins and then take additional recycling, get the free transfer station sticker, right? Because you've signed up for curbside and take your recycling to the transfer station. There's no cost for the recycling at the transfer station. It costs us money, but the bags are supposed to offset it at the transfer station, but, you know, I don't think we'll have that many people. So I think that'd be my recommendation to save them, give them the best opportunity for, for savings with the most service.
Okay. Questions? Patrick?
No.
Jim?
Just to touch on it, a lot of people are asking about the bi-weekly and one thing a lot of us didn't take into consideration is that the cost for disposal is now going to be charged. It's not going to be zero. So if people were receiving, or doing bi-weekly and had a better price, that price probably would have moved up. So I don't know if Mr. Sullivan wants to say anything on this or not. If we're going to address it or not. And I think the three sixty-five for people is a pretty good deal. And the best I heard for, for bi-weekly was, you know, about fifteen dollars less, but that was without, without the added increase of the cost for the hauler now to dispose of the trash, because they used to dispose of Wareham refuse for zero. So now it would be another eighty dollars a year to dispose of the refuse. I just figured I'd chime in on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Selectman Muniz is spot on with that. We, when we were speaking with some of the haulers and then we put the additional materials cost, it was looking like some of these were going up five to six hundred. And I, you know, I don't think people understood too. About two years ago, a senior couple called and complained to me from onset about their trash hauler. And we licensed the trash haulers, but it was just their own. And they said, well, they'd been missed two weeks in a row and they ended up bringing their, their bill over. They were paying eight hundred dollars a year. So, you know, this has been the Wild West and it's, and it's been all over. And some people, it sounds like they had some, some really fantastic deals, but others were really being taken advantage of. So, you know, it's just, just something to think about. And I really, in considering this, I really wonder, were those savings being passed on to our residents all, all these years from the haulers? Or were they just pocketing all that, that extra money? So, you know, that's something to keep in consideration. So, thank you. I appreciate it. You know, feel free to let me know thoughts, concerns. I have a rough working draft. I mean, I'm estimating two thousand opt-outs. I can tell you right now that, what we have for signups. Rolling over the ABC contracts, there was two thousand and five in December that they had. Another six hundred and thirteen have signed on new. Then you have our transfer station stickers that we sold, which I estimate those as not being duplicate. The reason being, most people are getting the transfer station sticker because they didn't have curbside during this time until April one. So the, we're looking at about thirty-eight hundred people that have signed up for the curbside program. And why we can't tell is it's, there's, it's really a, it's an automatic in, so it's difficult to get the exact numbers. We do have one thousand six hundred and twenty-five people that have signed up for the transfer station only. So that's bringing us up to five thousand four hundred and fifty people. Again, that two hundred and seventy-nine other persons that had, that are seasonal from ABC and we don't know whether they'll continue or not. And then from outside, non-resident carver, and reminder, they pay a hundred and forty dollars for the transfer station sticker. Three hundred and six of those have been sold.
Okay, thank you. Just going back to the curbside number, if we have thirty-eight hundred, if I remember correctly, when we, when we embarked on this, wasn't there an estimate of around forty-two hundred people who received curbside service within the town?
Yeah, there was, it looked like it was almost split down the middle of forty-four hundred curbside, forty-four hundred transfer station. So that's why in looking at the, you know, we had the, we have about eighty-two hundred persons that were engaged. We've got ten thousand two hundred households, if you will. So that's why with the abatement by other means, I'd factored in two thousand persons abating from this, so doing a full abatement.
Okay, thank you. It's actually, it's kind of heartening to see that we have, you know, already close to ninety percent of the curbside that we had, you know, last year with everybody, you know, being serviced by the different companies. But going forward, starting April one, there's at least, you know, ninety percent of those so far have signed up for it. I think what that, what that says is that the ability to negotiate a lower price with one hauler is attractive to a lot of people. You know, we understand some people, you know, like their hauler or, you know, maybe they stop and give their guy a cup of coffee or something like that from a different company or some, so on and so forth. But, you know, this was the, the upshot of, of the bylaw to authorize a single hauler is to put these savings, make these savings available. And I think the people, the way they're signing up shows that they're, at least the people who are signing up were appreciating those savings anyway. So, that's a program I'm liking at this point.
Mr. Chairman, just so people understand as well, you know, with an abatement process, what happens, right? So April one's when our first bills are going out. In those bills, you will also have a letter about the abatements, how to, how to apply, things such as that. You'll have thirty days. This is following sort of the same tax format, a tax format and what other communities are doing. You have thirty days to apply for, for your abatement. So, those that are going, that are planning on opting out, my, I'm, if I'm hearing from the board, you haven't totally agreed with it, but you're planning on doing something around those three, three phases, anybody that's looking for an abatement, that wouldn't, you wouldn't actually end up applying for one till after, till around April one, till when those are, or, or, you know, when those bills go out.
Yeah, you have to wait, you have to wait for the actual bill to abate something because until there's a bill, there's nothing to abate. So, so that makes sense. So that's not something that's going to be immediate and, and, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to tell you, you have to, you know, jump out of it by March or file or anything like that. So that, that makes perfect sense. It'll give, it'll give people a little more time to, you know, think about whether they want to opt out or not as well. Sometimes, today you might want to opt out, something might happen tomorrow and you might say, hey, wait a minute, I want to stick with this. So.
Yeah, we have had, there was somebody today that called us and there'd been another person, they'd gone for the transfer station sticker and they'd gone through the process and then they thought about it and wanted to opt in. So we still have some time to, to make changes and stuff for folks.
Yep. Okay, I'll go around one more time. Any final thoughts, Alan? I have to go to turn on your mic.
I had someone today while I was at breakfast this morning ask me, is it possible for me to try it for a month? And if I decide I don't want the curbside pickup, can I back out? I think I talked to Derek about that before, but I thought that something else we need to put into the list as well. Normally you'd, if you opted in, you'd have to at least stay for the first quarter possibly, but I'm not sure how that's going to work, but it was a question that was brought out to add to the mess of everything else we have. That's it.
Thank you. Patrick?
No, it's just a lot to work on.
Yep. Jim?
Oh, no, good job there, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you, Selectman Muniz. So that's, and just topping off with that, yeah, it's, I will obviously need direction from the board on what policy decisions you wish to make.
Yep.
Got to be us.
Judy?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Muniz as well as Mr. Sullivan. It's been a really crummy three months. And I'm not sure that everybody understands the time squeeze that Mr. Muniz was under because of the district. And then the other things that sort of fell on his feet, if you will, in terms of how the district was dealing with who's going to be able to use what and that kind of thing. So, yeah, we look a little bit disorganized, I guess. But honestly, gentlemen, you've done a nice job and I want to thank you very much. And I think that, that we have heard the public very clearly and we will be looking at whatever options we feel are appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, something I don't know if anybody really knows out there is that Jim graciously took on the task of answering the dozens and dozens of emails we were getting and, and tried to provide, you know, some level of response to people. You know, tried to, tried to, you know, for specific concerns, he tried to, you know, at least mention that, just, you know, talk about the things that we would be talking about tonight. So I also want to thank him for that. This isn't just about, you know, the work that he put in to, to get the program, you know, sort of established and, you know, to, to look at it, you know, as we go along, but it's also the fact that he's been the one who's been doing the most interfacing with people directly and I'm very appreciative for that. It's taken a lot, a big load off of my plate. So thank you very much, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to thank, specifically, you know, the, I've already told you, I'm nominating Patty for St. Hood. But also municipal maintenance, Mr. Menard for taking it on, and then the, the staff over there. You know, Lori, Amber, Tracy, they're, they're doing a fantastic job. And I don't think people understand, usually a, I'll call it a bureaucracy like this, it is created with a whole new department with the specific department head, with staff. We've been doing this with the staff that we already have. Obviously, we had to hire two new people for the transfer station itself, but everything else is being done in-house to try and keep the cost down as much as possible. So this is a subsidized program, no matter what anybody, no matter what anybody says. So, thank you.
Yeah, and the other piece, just with regard to the, to the literally over a thousand phone messages that were left, there's just no way for the staff we have to address that, that volume of phone messages. So, you know, I would, I would ask people to try to pay attention to the media reports. Hopefully we, you know, the directions that we seem to be going in tonight will, will lessen some of the, the inquiries or at least will address some of the concerns because, you know, we have, you know, people in the Selectment's office, we have one and a half people in there, literally. The half person has been delegated a couple of days a week to go into a different department to help out there. Derek has one assistant who answers the phone and that's it. And when you're faced with a thousand voicemails, you know, following the letters going out, it's just not possible for us to answer all of those voicemails and to, we just don't have the bodies to do it. We need, we'd have to hire the, you know, the South Asian phone bank to deal with it. Those people wouldn't make you happy anyway. So, you know, please bear with us. We'll be making some decisions fairly soon that, you know, should address a lot of the issues that people have raised and we thank everybody out there for their patience as well. Jumping back on the agenda, we have Leslie Edwards Davis. Could we unmask Leslie's Galaxy S nine so that she can participate? Could we unmask Leslie's Galaxy S nine so that she can participate?
It says that my video is still disabled.
Yeah, they'll turn it on in a second.
All right, no worries.
In the meantime, Judy, why don't you start reading? There you are. Good evening. Now we gotta get Leslie's microphone on.
I think it's good.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Judy?
Yes, Ms. Davis has applied for and been recommended for membership on the Wareham Cultural Council. And I will make a motion to appoint her to the Wareham Cultural Council to a term ending June thirtieth of 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy, a second by Alan. Leslie, why don't you tell us about your interest in this particular committee?
Sure, so I moved to Wareham a little over two years ago. And I have a background in arts and literature. I have a master's of fine arts in English. I studied poetry at UMass Amherst for grad school. I've been a literary editor for a magazine. I work in community theater. I work with the theater in Middleborough and the Masquet River Productions and I work with them on costumes and props and I'm on their creative board. This is all just extracurricular activities, not what I do for a living, but I do for work, I do a lot of things that I think would make good crossovers to the work that I, I think the council does. I do a lot of event planning, I do a lot of educational programming. So I do have a background that I think lends itself to this council and I just want to get more involved, basically. I'm one of those people who likes to be involved, so.
Great, well, thank you for, thank you for your interest and thank you for stepping up. So we have a motion from Judy and a second by Alan, roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Judy suggests waiting until next week to go into town hall due to staffing issues we have this week. You'll need to call the selectmen's office, make an appointment, go up and get the form that we're gonna sign off on and take it down to the clerk and formally get sworn in.
Okay.
So that should be available next week. Judy will be in touch with you when it's ready.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you for stepping up.
I look forward to it.
Thanks. Let's see, Bessie Park Stormwater retrofit. So we're gonna need...
Mr. Costa.
Dr. Costa needs to be up on the screen. Who else? Do we have anybody else?
Michelle West is here from Horsey Witten Group.
Doke. Did you bring anybody else with you?
That's it, just me and Michelle.
Okay, well, I'll turn, Derek can, can go through this portion of it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were fortunate enough to be part of a grant. And I think Dr. Costa would probably be the better one explaining.
Okay, I'll take over here. My name is Joe Costa. I'm Executive Director of the Buzzes Bay National Estuary Program in Unit Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management. Since 2016, we have provided support to the town of Wareham and other towns in the Buzzes Bay Stormwater Collaborative to monitor stormwater discharges and map stormwater networks to help you comply with your federal MS four stormwater permit. Mr. Menard and the Public Works Department has provided crews to assist monitoring teams which are composed of Mass Maritime students and staff. One of the program goals of this project is to identify sites where stormwater treatment might improve water quality. Last year, we received funding from EPA to pay for stormwater treatment designs and permitting for priority sites. In early 2020, we consulted with local Public Works officials and we identified fifteen sites, including four in the town of Wareham. We also hired the environmental service firm Horsey Witten Group to develop conceptual stormwater plans for sixty sites and final plans for three. In May, we notified the Board of Selectmen about this project and provided a description and maps of the four sites under consideration. We held an online meeting with the towns. In August, we notified the town of Wareham that we identified two of its sites were selected for the development of conceptual plans. One was Bessie Park and the other was the boat ramp parking lot and surrounding area at Tempest Knob. Your DPW dug test pits at these sites to help Horsey Witten Group identify potential stormwater treatment options. In November, I notified the board, we had selected Bessie Park as the most viable site and we provided to the board conceptual plans and said that in the next few months, we would bring, be working with the town to develop stormwater plans within the constraints of the site and that meets the needs of the town. And we also said we'd assist the town in securing state grants to implement the stormwater designs at this project. Last month, the Horsey Witten Group filed a permit with the CONCON and that meeting was continued and it was suggested that a presentation on this project to the board would be beneficial. So what I'm gonna do is turn it over to Michelle, who'll present a slideshow and describe the project and give you more details about what is proposed at Bessie Park.
Thank you. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. I will wait to be allowed to do so.
Yep.
By the way, thank you, Dr. Costa. You did much better than I on that description.
Sure, thanks.
Still not letting me in.
And by the way, I just want to thank the town. This is a very challenging year for everyone. I, I know that. And Mr. Menard, the DPW crews have been doing a great job in, in working with us. So we really appreciate the effort during this very challenging past year, trying to meet goals of this program. So thank you.
Somebody's gotta get Steve to let her in.
I'm in.
It takes him a minute or so.
All right. There we go. Okay, thank you, Dr. Costa, for introducing the project. And just to give some context, here are the five towns that he referenced and the various sites that we have been analyzing over the past many months. And the final three that we are moving forward with permitting and final design. And of course, tonight, the focus is Bessie Park. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the existing conditions out at the park and why this area was looked at so closely. There are two existing stormwater outfalls into the Wareham River. One directly from the parking lot, this is the parking lot there at the park. And is everyone able to see what I'm pointing at? Maybe I need to turn on a little laser pointer. There we go. There is a catch basin right here in the parking lot that takes the stormwater that collects from this area and discharges it directly to the river with no treatment. So any of the pollutants that might be in that runoff, whether it be bacteria or sediment, nutrients, oils, greases, all of that goes directly into the river from this parking lot in this location. Over here, we have another outfall into the river and this actually takes a much larger drainage area to this point. And I'll show you in a moment what that encompasses. But basically, it is connected to a, a large drainage network that goes down Main Street and then up Cedar Street and collects some of the runoff from High Street as well. And this all collects in these pipes and is discharged again out into the Wareham River. And just some pictures that I took when I was out there. This one here on the left was a picture after a rain event not too long ago. I happened to be in the area and I just, I love to check out my sights even on weekends. So I happened to swing by Bessie Park and, and took a look and it does currently pond out there in the parking lot after rain events. And this was not surprising to me because I knew that the, the catch basin currently is very clogged. And so this is probably a common condition after a rain event that much of the parking lot, this is, these are the parking spaces for the park, is actually flooded and, and not very usable. And this is not caused by tide. There was a good two or three foot difference between the level of the Wareham River and the parking lot at this, at this point. And then this is just looking at one of the, the areas near the parking lot that we are looking at possibly using for, for this project. So this is a drainage area map and I know it's hard to see at this scale, but I was kind of describing it before. We had the outfall here at the parking lot and that takes the small drainage area of a little bit of a road here and the direct drive aisles and parking lot in the park itself that flows down to that outfall. And it's about two-thirds of an acre for that drainage area that discharges to the first outfall. And then the second outfall that I had pointed out is a much larger drainage area. It's about six and a half acres of this whole neighborhood up here that when, every time it rains, water is collected in that pipe network that I spoke about and, and brings all that water down to the Wareham River here. And of that six and a half acres, about two acres of it is impervious roadway and driveways. Impervious meaning that the, the water, when it rains, cannot soak into the ground, but instead it's paved or perhaps compacted gravel and the water will run off and flow into the drainage network. And I wanted to point out that there's a large portion of the park that's not part of our drainage area to these outfall pipes that is, is further over here to the north. So we're really just focused on the outfall pipes in this side of the park. So the proposed conditions for this project, as Dr. Costa mentioned, the purpose of this project is try to include, improve water quality, excuse me, focused largely on the bacteria that is found in stormwater runoff, but also on nitrogen. The Wareham River is impaired for both of those pollutants. And so we're looking at ways to try to treat this water before it's discharged directly to the river. And the practices that are really effective at removing bacteria and nitrogen from stormwater are grouped together in a phrase called green infrastructure. And it's really a way of trying to mimic natural processes in an engineered way to treat runoff while also providing other benefits. And I'll show you some examples in a moment. But basically, part of our proposal for, that we took to permitting with the Conservation Commission was something we call hard-edged bio, bio-retention that we're proposing for the parking lot. And so this is a more structured feature that is appropriate for a parking lot where cars will be parking right up next to it. And I'll show you a graphic of what that looks like in a moment. And then two quote-unquote "soft" bio-retention areas proposed in these currently grassy areas. These are some graphics to give you a sense for what I'm talking about. We are not proposing to have some sort of large ponded water detention area. These are very natural, shallow with soft slopes, at least for these soft-edged bio-retentions, very shallow slopes. No more than about six inches of, of ponding after rain events and then twenty-four to forty-eight hours following a rain event. You wouldn't see any ponded water in these areas. They are planted with native plants and the native plants help to reduce the pollutants in the runoff as well as the soil that we use in these areas helps to filter it. And then in the side here, you see a hard-edged bio. And like I said, this is a more structural practice that is appropriate to, to use alongside a parking lot as we are for this project. I just wanted to mention that in, in order to make space for this bio-retention, we do need to back the parking spaces up to make sure that people can still pull into the spaces and make space for this treatment of the stormwater. So we are proposing to remove that pavement alongside the sidewalk and bump it out in this direction as well. So there will be that change. But other than that, in terms of the parking spaces, that would stay the same and hopefully alleviate those ponding issues that you see today. The other thing that we are proposing is, in our modeling, we discovered that the pipe for this second outfall is actually undersized. And so we're, we're proposing to, to fix that problem and that should help with some flooding issues for this drainage area as well. Then I just wanted to give some examples of what these features could look like. This isn't exactly what the hard-edged bio would look like for this project, but it's an example of how, you can see how it's within the curbing here. And then this is an example of what a bio-retention area with native plants and flowers and grasses could look like. Again, the, the mix of species that we would use for the site is a little different. But you can see this is not a drop off, a deep hole in the ground that's constantly filled with water, but more of a native-planted area. And this is that same area in a different season. So you can see different flowers are blooming and, and it's mostly a grassy meadow look to it. And this is just another example with some additional similar plants that, that would be proposed for this area. And with that, I'll stop talking and, and take any questions.
Peter?
Okay, yep, I'll start with Alan.
I actually was out there when they came just recently to, to show us the area. The one thing we had concerns for our several members of the conservation was really the, the extent of the area. But when looking at it, we realized that unfortunately, when you go down to Main, Lower Main Street, as you look at all the homes there, they're all on basically on the hills going all the way up to High Street. So there's a tremendous amount of water runoff coming all the way down from the hospital, the marijuana facility, the Historical Society's Kendrick Museum, everything all flowing down into that area. So it's not just the, the park itself. And under the MS four program, my fear is that basically with the state program, we're forced to have these, these places cleaned up, especially since water goes into Buzzes Bay, which is gonna be the TDM, the TDL, whatever it is, you know, requirements down the line for water purity that we're gonna be forced to take care of. We have the opportunity for someone else to pay for this. Either that or we pay for it somewhere down the line or we end up with the same project. I, I am concerned about the park itself, although the area, most people do actually go to the park and sit is over to the other side. This is more, you know, and stuff, but the bottom line still is, I was hoping there'd be a way to compromise a little bit size-wise so we would retain a little more area for people to sit and relax. There was some confusion originally about how deep the bio-retention area was. And I think there was a misunderstanding in, in the mapping. I, I remember someone said it was like gonna be five feet deep and that wasn't possible because without people drowning in five feet deep water in that area, which is not gonna be pleasant for us. I'm laughing, it's not really funny, but that's it. So it's only like anywhere from one to a three-inch drop-off and stuff. So from my point of view, I don't think this, I don't think we have much of a choice unless we're willing to sit there and pay for this a couple of years down the road. Thank you.
Okay, Patrick?
So I reviewed this and, you know, being one who worked with Derek and understanding most of it, I think it's a nice job. I thought it was a pretty good design. I thought it was a minimal impact in the, in the area itself, but what the gain is. It's a considerable gain from all that runoff coming down the hill and so on that goes directly into the water. I mean, it's, it's not a good thing. And I thought it was designed well. If you use the contours, you can see that it wasn't five feet deep. Pretty simple. There, there's a contour map and it's pretty much, you can see the contours if you pay attention and it's very shallow and, you know, with native flowers and things of that nature, it should look very nice. And actually, will give the park, I think, some character when you're walking in the park and when you're... And when you're, you're making use of it, it'll have some characteristics to it other than just a piece of grass. There'll still be a seating area. I noticed there was some picnic tables drawn in on the, under what I guess of you're facing Main Street, the right side of the property.
The areas I thought they, they, they kept them probably based on their poll rates about as, as small as they could. I, I think it's a pretty good job. I know it'll change Bessie Park a little bit for some people who want it to remain like it did in 1950. But, you know, 50 is over and this is 21, so.
Jim?
I want to thank Ms. Weston, Dr. Costa, and, you know, being able to take part in this. And I think it addresses some issues we have. And I actually think it'll be a positive addition to the, to the park and the view and, you know, the scenic, you know, seating around it or whatever. And I'm, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Judy?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions for you, Ms. West. How does the water get from the stormwater pipes into those beds? Because the pipes are now underground. So can you explain how that's going to work out?
Sure. I might need to share my screen again.
Thank you.
Let's see if I can go back here. Let's see. Let's try that again. Apologize for that. Okay. So that is a good question. The majority of the runoff that I spoke of from that large drainage area is collected down in the pipes, which makes it harder to then treat it once it's below the ground. But luckily it is above the, the elevation of the road is higher than these locations in the park. And what we're able to do is put in a structure right here that not only provides some pre-treatment, removing some of the sediments, trash and oils, but it also provides us a way to divert some of that runoff into our bio retentions without needing any pumps or anything like that. I think that's probably what you're, you were getting at. We want to make sure we, we use gravity. We don't need anything special to get the, the water into the bio retentions. It's all based on hydraulic head to force the water into these, these areas. And the goal here is to treat the dirtiest water, if you will. We refer to that as the first flush. It's usually about the first inch of runoff. So if you can imagine having a dirty plate that you stick under a faucet in your sink and you let the water run for a minute and you get all of that spaghetti sauce off, you can keep running the water from the faucet for another hour or two hours, as long as you want, but no more dirt's coming off that plate. That's kind of how the first flush concept works. So the, the focus is trying to treat that first inch of runoff and then let, letting the larger storms bypass and continue onto the river. And so that was our goal for this project. Unfortunately, with the area allowed, we were not able to actually meet the one inch. We're at about 85% of that goal with this area. But we think that it's going to provide a, a great benefit to, to the park. And, and hopefully the, the public will enjoy it as well. And I wanted to add something I, I forgot to mention earlier is that we, we put in some stepping stones and, and the exact layout could, could change. But with the idea of, of trying to encourage people to come into this area and not just have it something with a fence that's, you know, blocked off from, from people. This is supposed to be interactive and educational and hopefully bring an asset to the public and to the park.
I have a couple more questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Looking at the slide that you have up right now, can you, that pipe goes right under what I can call the entrance to the park?
Yes.
Okay. I was down there the day that it rained. And I saw the stakes that are in the ground. That area floods all of the time. It doesn't need to be a big rain. It can be a small rain because the, the pipes are clearly plugged up.
I'm sorry. Do you mean in the parking lot? Sorry to interrupt. Yes.
Yes. So are, is the, is the parking lot going to remain paved or can you put in permeable stuff?
You could put in permeable pavement here. What, the reason we didn't recommend that is we have a larger drainage area than just the parking lot. So that would be run on. So basically water from the roadway would run down onto this parking lot. And that's where you can get clogging of permeable pavement. So permeable pavement is like an asphalt or you can use concrete, but we, we would probably use an asphalt here that has open voids and allows the water to actually soak into it. But if you allow runoff to, to come on to that service, you can get a lot of clogging and, and can lead to it failing. So that's one of the reasons that we didn't propose it for this area. But with what we did propose, we have these two four bays on, on either end. These are the areas where all of the runoff will enter into the system. And they are proposed for pre-treatment. So a lot of the sediment and, you know, if there's any trash or that sort of thing, will be able to be collected in these locations before it gets into the bio retention. And then it's further filtered and cleaned in this area. And there'll be actually two overflow structures to take the larger storms to the outfall. So all of those together will help prevent that ponding that we see out there right now. Right now it's just a catch basin. It's completely full of sediment to connect it to the outfall pipe.
Okay. Thank you. So there are a couple of trees that are going to have to come out. And the, there's a, there's a street lamp that's going to have to be moved.
Yes, correct. There is a street lamp that we are proposing to move. We are not proposing any trees to be removed. We are proposing to protect them all. That being said, of course, it is possible that one will get damaged during this process. But it is outside of, I believe it's right here is that tree. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not using my laser pointer. But we, we certainly intend, the, the plans intend to, to protect it and have tree protection around it.
Can you tell me how old that Prince Cove picture is? How, how long ago? When you, you showed a slide of Prince Cove with vegetation. How long has that vegetation been in place?
That has been in place two years, I believe. That was taken this past summer.
So that's a two year old growth?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess this is a question to, well, I don't know who it's to, but how much maintenance actually is there in either one of those bio berms, I'll call them? You don't have to mow them clearly. What do you have to do to them to maintain them?
The biggest part will be keeping track of these sediment four bays here and keeping those cleaned. They don't have to be cleaned every month, but twice a year. And certainly to keep an eye on them. The nice thing about the fact that these are on the surface is that you can see when they get clogged and a lot of times, you know, out of sight, out of mind. But these are right up where everyone will see it and hopefully that'll help them get cleaned more often. The same thing is true for these other two bios. We've got two four bays as well as that diversion structure I had mentioned. And so that's where the majority of the maintenance needs to take place. And if that is kept up with on a regular basis, then very little would need to be done with the actual bio retentions themselves, other than trying to keep up with weeds. And I mean, that's the big thing is trying to, to keep invasive species and, and weed species down so that you, you maintain the, the grasses and the, the flowers that you want.
In some towns, we've seen garden clubs adopt these sites and do nice plantings within them. Island Wharf, I think in Marion would be an example of that is where we did a, a large bio filter like this.
Okay, thank you.
I like Dr. Costa. That's, because Sandy's on here right now and I hope she's getting ready to adopt.
I worked in the city of New Bedford for 23 years and I can remember vividly in high rainstorms, how the sewer pipes would back up and the, the manhole covers of the sewers would actually pop and run down the streets of New Bedford, the ones nearest the river was just plain sewage. We know there's a lot of nip bottles blocking up these, these drains, by the way, just to be sort of funny, but not really. I think this is a very, very, oh, cavitation. What we have there right now? Is it, is cavitation going on in the seawall? Are we at risk at that seawall because of the load of water?
In the parking lot?
Yep.
I don't think so. I mean, the water was ponding in the parking lot itself, not up against the, the seawall per se.
Okay. All right. I, I, I want to congratulate you. I want to thank you. I think it's a very thorough presentation. I did walk the locations of where the stakes are, which I'm guessing Mr. Menard or his crew put out there. Yes, it changes the appearance of the park, but it changes it for the better, in my opinion. The northern end of the park is the one that's used the most right now. Where your bio two B is, is actually where the porta potty is put in the summertime. And there's a picnic table to the north of the parking lot right now. And maybe, you know, maybe the town or, or the garden club or something puts more of those in. It's a very attractive area for fishing. And I think it could be, it could be a very attractive place as well as one that serves a function. As Mr. Slaven pointed out, we can do it now on your dime or we can do it later. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I don't have anything, you know, specific about this. I, I know of course that, you know, once you put one of these things in, you know, any thoughts, you know, expanding parking over to the edge and so on and so forth, go by the boards. There, there doesn't appear to be any interference with any waterborne uses, which is good. Because, you know, we, we do have people tying up boats there and getting off and, you know, hopefully going and having a bite to eat or doing a little shopping down there and so on and so forth. So I don't see it interfering with that. And I do think it is, you know, helpful overall with the water quality. So I think that's, you know, it, it, it's a fairly good project. What is it specifically that's being sought from us tonight, I guess, is my question?
Oh, some sort of endorsement. There was some concern at the Conservation Commission about a number of broader elements of the project that went beyond what would be in their jurisdiction. And I guess there was some reservation and, and that is why they wanted to continue the meeting. But I'll let Michelle explain further. Any additional concerns they had?
Yes, the, the Conservation Commission, we seem to answer their questions and, and concerns. They were more interested in making sure that the site was properly staked so everyone could visualize the project. And then I was reached out to by the town administrator to, to discuss kind of the, the broader issue of using the park surface for this type of project and that there needed to be more discussion. And so we had offered to, to come in and provide this presentation.
And the Conservation Commission also raised whether or not we needed a permit from the historical commission. And we're not aware of any need for that requirement.
It would be the Historical District Commission.
I'm sorry, Historical District Commission.
Because the pack is in the historic district, Joe. That's why.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, I'd seen this and they had sent these. Dr. Costa made sure to, he brought up all the different periods that we could have had input on it. And when, you know, when I was looking at it, I looked at and we talked about some of the, the area being utilized. I thought this is definitely something to bring you policymakers in on, so.
And, and the support of selectmen, quite frankly, are the people who have to sign off on an application to, you know, to fund construction. So I, you know, we're going through this effort. I want to make sure you buy into it and that the designs don't, don't fall flat. Because if the town is putting an application, we're helping you put in a, a grant application. You're the ones who are signing that grant application.
Yep. Understood. So I guess the, the, the vote here would be by way of a motion to endorse the project as proposed?
I'll make that motion. I move that we, the Board of Selectmen endorsed the Bessie Park Stormwater retrofit program.
Second by Alan.
Okay. We have a motion by Judy, second by Alan. Is there any further discussion to be had? By anybody? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick? Did we lose Patrick? Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Patrick, you're back? Nope. Okay, myself, yes. Four zero zero on the motion. So thank you very much for your presentation. It was comprehensive. The questions were certainly covered and answered and we appreciate working with you going forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank Joe and thank Michelle very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, presentation of Deacon School redevelopment study. Mr. King from Serpent will be appearing next week. This one on the agenda and then that, that didn't work out for him. So that will be back on next week. Now, jumping down. Vote to authorize negotiation of a marijuana host committee agreement with Smithers AMS LLC 790 Main Street, Wareham. Derek, do you know if we have anybody from Smithers here?
Yeah, we have, I believe, I thought we had a couple of people on here, so.
Okay, if they will, I guess, message me so that.
There's, there's Ron.
Okay. There's one. And who else? Let's see if we can get Ron's microphone up.
So we have Eric Steele, Susan Shepherd and Jesse Alderman are council.
Okay, so we'll wait for Jesse to pop up and then you can discuss what this is all about. And we'll go from there. So if WCTV could get Jesse on the screen and unmuted.
All right, so.
Yep, go ahead, please.
We're in the process of developing a marijuana testing laboratory at our facility over at 790 Main Street. Might be where we have a warrant on the town meeting to, to look at zoning because we have the Deacon School still, still in place next door. And so we have a zoning issue, but we can still submit our license to the CCC if we have a conditional community, a host community agreement where the, the conditional part is based on town meeting voting for the zoning change for the zero foot abutment to a school. We would, with that host community agreement, we can still move forward with our application. So we're requesting the opportunity to move our host community agreement forward so that we can begin that, that process. host community agreement forward so that we can begin that, that process.
Ron, it's Jesse. If I could, if I could jump in very briefly to just add to, to what you said. This is Jesse Alderman from Foley Hall Act Council to Smithers. Smithers is, for those that, I know Smithers has been before this board and the planning board a couple of times, but if I might just remind folks, if you'll indulge me, Smithers is an existing environmental testing laboratory in the town, right off Main Street. And what they are proposing to do is to add independent testing services for the cannabis industry. Cannabis has to be tested by law for a host of contaminants, pesticides and other dangerous substances before it can hit the market. So what, what, what Smithers has done is identified some current space within the lab that will be fully segregated and separated in compliance with the CCC's security regulations. And the laboratory would, as I understand it, Ron, right, test a handful of tablespoons of cannabis a month. I mean, frankly, excuse me, a week. Frankly, the amount that one or two patients or consumers purchases in a dispensary will come through that facility a week and be tested and destroyed on site. Because there's a five hundred foot buffer between any pre-existing K through twelve private or public school in the town's zoning, technically the Smithers site for this testing service, for this laboratory testing service is not in compliance with the zoning. So what we would propose and what we've had some existing conversations with, with the planning director and the town administrator about proposing before you would be entering the host community agreement, which, like other host community agreements, has a financial component as well as a commitment on behalf of Smithers to mitigate what are frankly very minimal impacts, but nonetheless to mitigate those impacts. We would, that would be conditioned on a positive town meeting vote. If the town meeting vote did not occur in our favor, the host community agreement would, would no longer be operative. It would have failed to have met the, the legal condition. But what having that host community agreement does, as, as Ron mentioned, is allows Smithers to submit its application to the CCC, which as, as you folks probably know from the other cannabis businesses in town, is a process that takes many months to complete. So we would just be getting basically in the CCC pipeline if you were to, you know, vote to allow the town administrator to negotiate that host community agreement and as Ron calls it, conditional with us. So we, you know, happy to answer any questions and would be hopeful for your consideration on that.
Okay, uh, thank you. Is there anything else to be added before I turn it over to the questions from the board? Okay, not seeing anything. Alan?
Okay, I know the company fairly well. I've been there several times when they came before the planning board quite a while ago and they are set up exactly to do this particular type of procedure. They're here in Wareham because of our water and they do their testing because of it. They're a, what I would call an extremely low pack business in the town of Wareham. Most people don't even know they're there. There's no environmental problems at all whatsoever. They provide what I call very good paying jobs. And I'm not sure if they'll have to add any more jobs to do this or not, but they definitely will be set up to do this. Ideally, we have several manufacturers in town right now. The state is short on labs. We have a couple of large, I would say large companies coming in here to basically manufacture. And the process slows down because stuff has to be tested at a certain timeframe. That said, I understand the five hundred foot issue, but of course down the line, we're expecting the Deacon School to be decommissioned about a year, a year and a half. So it could be a moot question going forward because with the Cannabis Control Commission, with all the delays that currently are, it could take up to a year, but hopefully less than that for them to get their final certification to go into business. So I'd be very much in favor of trying to get this done for them. Cause they'll provide a service that needs to be done. It'll be another source of revenue for the town of Wareham. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, I'm fine with this.
Okay, Jim?
Really silly question, but I'm, I'm assuming that you own the property as well as the, the business, the same corporation?
Yes.
Okay, good. And it would be a conditional agreement, a host agreement based upon the passage of a town meeting vote and that's what it would be negotiated as. So that's the case and I guess I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you. Jim, not Jim, Judy?
Yes, Smithers has been very good neighbors for as many years as they've been there. They've also been a very almost invisible corporate presence, but they are very well regarded and I think that this is a really a no-brainer in terms of what, how I would vote, which would be to have them continue doing the testing and expanding it into the cannabis industry. Thank you.
Yeah. I agree with everything that's been said. We, we all know, you know, in the industry, the big choke point these days that's, you know, keeping people from getting product to market is the lack of testing facilities and testing capacity. And, you know, we're, we're positioned in this town. We've got, you know, multiple people, you know, producing, manufacturing, growing the whole nine yards. And so this is just a logical extension of, of what's been permitted to date is to try to get something in there that can help those businesses, you know, compete in the, in the state and in the larger marketplace by getting their product tested within a reasonable amount of time. So I, I think this is a good thing for us to do. Is there anything else to be said? If there isn't anything, I'll just ask for a motion?
I move to authorize negotiation of a marijuana host community agreement with Smithers AMS LLC, seven ninety Main Street, Wareham, Mass.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy and a second by Patrick. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Thank you, gentlemen, and we look forward to what you come up with, with the town administrator going forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
And another lab, imagine that.
Hi, I just unmuted myself. I'm not sure if anybody can hear me. This is Tag Glenn.
Yep, yep, we can. So Judy and I are very familiar with you through the redevelopment authority, but for the edification of the rest of the board, if you could just introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking to do at Four Recovery Road?
Sure, actually, your previous guest there just kind of said the same thing, similar story. It's great to have other people involved in the same world. So yeah, independent testing lab, Four Recovery Road. Pretty much the same guys said the same things earlier that wrap it up, you know. I'm not sure what else you guys want me to add, but we're, you know, I've been, I've been working on this for a few years. I've had some investors come and go. But I've got some investors in and we're looking to move ahead. So just looking to kind of get officially on the ground to sign up the host community agreement and go from there.
Okay, uh, let's see. Questions from the board. Alan?
You're the same group that originally was going to go ahead with this and then seemed to get delayed for quite a while?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My only concern is that, because we're having issues not just with your particular place, but with several other companies that have come in, you know, with retail licenses, other things that have taken a year or more, which is a lot of lost income for the town. I don't have any problem with what you're gonna do. I'm just hoping this sets go forward with no more delays.
I, I would, I agree. I'm, I've been working on this for a long time, so nobody wants it more off the ground than I. So I, I concur. I agree. And we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Thanks. Patrick?
I'm all set.
Uh, Jim?
Do we have a signed lease, an agreement on the property contract?
Yeah, we haven't executed the, the lease yet. Well, actually, I'll ask Derek because Derek's the one who did, who did the procurement on that. Where, where do we stand right now?
You have an initial lease starting on it for, that they have an interest in. And then once they have the, I believe, once they've got the approval from, from the Campus Control Commission, it kicks off the next phase of the lease with the full payments. So they do have a lease interest in it right now.
Yep.
So.
That's what we voted as the WRA, correct?
Yep.
Can you provide that for us?
I can't right now, but I can sure.
That's usually something we, we would look for to have is a, is a lease, a signed contract, a lease. I, I believe we require that for companies that want to do business in, in this area and I, not to belabor the point, but I think we, we were going to discuss last week, process and we didn't get to it. So I'm just bringing that up. And that's an important thing, whether it's through the WRA or another property owner. That's something I believe that's required. If I'm wrong, please correct me. And I'd like to see that get done sooner than not, at least have a signature on that. Thank you.
Okay, Judy?
Yes, actually, Bay State has a, does have the conditional authorization and it also has a, I'll call it a drop dead date from WRA. So I think maybe that would help you, Mr. Muniz.
Yeah, just, you know, send it to us and you know, and then I'd be more than glad to, you know, approve this.
Just a comment from, for Jim, the Cannabis Control Commission will require that they provide some kind of a lease showing they have control of the building, or else it will stop right there and they won't be able to go forward at all with their any agreements with CCC.
That's okay. And I'm just asking to see that.
I know you want to see one as well. I have no problem with that.
Okay, so what's the board's pleasure here?
I'll move to authorize a negotiation of a marijuana host community agreement with Bay State Labs, Limited Liability Corporation, Four Recovery Road, Wareham, Mass.
Second.
Yeah, this is of course contingent upon the, the lease being executed, which at our level, before we would execute a host community agreement and also at the, we know at the state level. So just to make that clear. Anything further? See, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim? Uh, Judy?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four one zero. That takes care of that. Presentation of the fiscal year 2022 budget. This is going to be your, thank you very much, Mr. Glenn. We look forward to
Thank you.
You negotiating with the town administrator.
Thank you.
Yeah, Derek, on the fiscal year 2022 budget, I understand this is going to be sort of the, the view from the stratosphere over it at this point?
Yeah, I'm gonna see if I can get the budget up there. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so. Starting at nine thirty, this will be interesting. So I'll try and give you as much info as possible. So this is the 2022 budget, the there we go. Let me move our faces around. So how do you start off with your budget? When you're building it up, you start off with the FY twenty-one tax levy, which was the, the levy limit plus the two and a half increase and then your estimated new growth. That creates your FY twenty-two, your FY twenty-two levy limit, which is the forty-three million and change you see there. Then you get the two and a half percent increase, which is now up to a one million ninety thousand. So when people hear proposition two and a half, it is the levy limit that's only allowed to increase by two and a half percent. It has nothing to do with individual taxpayers' homes and, and things like that. Those can fluctuate based on market conditions. Then the next thing you have is your estimated new growth. This new growth that you'll see later on is less than what we had for actuals for last year in speaking with the Director of Assessing. We're looking at probably not as many, I think there was a solar project that came online that gave us a good boost last, last year or this year, if you will, that we won't see. So that would be, we're estimating at three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And just so everybody understands, you need about, to get that new growth of thirty, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you need about thirty-four million dollars of new grow, of new construction and personal property and other items. So just I, I think that's one of the things we tried to explain to people in the past, that if they see one new building coming up, that's, you know, that's not, that's not worth hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax revenue. So that becomes our, our new base, if you will, the forty-five million. Then you come forward with the debt exclusion numbers and those are, that is what we're paying for the new school. The new school is doing very well. The new school is doing very well with the construction that they're at over fifty percent. They've dipped very low into the contingencies. So this could be outside of a, a ban to get the final payment back from the MSBA. This could be the final amount that we borrowed, which is about, I think it's less than two thirds of what we estimated. So you'll have, what that means is you'll have already seen the increase to your taxes. And then, you know, this is going to be basically a set portion of that going forward. So I gotta tell you, that, that group, you know, and then Chad Crittenton and his outfit have done a fantastic job. So, and then obviously the, you know, the, the group itself. So state aid, chapter seventy revenues and then the charter school. We are, we've received the first cherry sheet. If you remember, for this fiscal year, we had planned a ten percent reduction. So what you're going to see at the end of this is our new revenue for FY twenty-two versus the FY twenty-one actual will only look like a six hundred thousand dollar increase, but it'll be substantially more because we, we did not budget the full state aid for this fiscal year. Because we didn't know whether we would have, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty percent reductions. But the governor reached into the rainy day fund to make sure that we were fully funded. Then you'll see the, the next part is our general government aid, which is about, which is almost two point six eight million. Estimated local receipts, those are, those are still trailing a little bit. We're going to have less than the previous year available funds. Then the enterprise fund, we're down some staffing. So there's just a, there's a small adjustment down on that as a, as a, as an offset. So our total estimated revenues for fiscal twenty twenty-two at this point are seventy million, four hundred thousand, ninety-one dollars. So again, you can see the differences between the, the two years. We had the tax levy, but then the, that's including the two and a half percent there. Then you'll see the change from the debt exclusion from FY twenty-one to twenty-two. Estimated new, new growth, that's what we've gone over. And again, it looks like we only received seventy, you know, twenty-three thousand dollars in, in state aid, which is what we only truly did for chapter seventy, twenty-three thousand new. But since we did not, we budgeted a ten percent reduction before, you'll see we have an overall increase in revenues later on. Seventy thousand dollar increase for the, for the general government. Local receipts again down. We're, we, we've peaked on some of our automotive excise tax and then we're still trailing about twenty-two percent on our meals tax. And then the hotel motel excise tax is down forty percent a year over year. So available funds, this is the largest reduction you'll see. If you remember, we brought in six hundred thousand dollars from the stabilization fund to this year's budget. We did that as a precaution. We, again, because we didn't know what was going to happen with state aid. Um, we did that as a a precaution, we, again, because we didn't know what was going to happen with uh, state aid. And then the other ones, if uh, this is usually where we pull from. The wetlands protection and then some of the uh, receipts reserved for appropriation accounts with the uh. The uh, the harbor master and such, we have been draining those down. And I would like to try and give them a break this year to help them, help them start recharging, if you will. Uh, we we've hit them every single year for a long time. And we know that some of those funds were, we're going to try and use, uh, try and help for some capital, such as working towards the onset peer, so. Um, and then the wetlands, we used to pull more out, we were down to twenty-five thousand. And I think you would have twenty-five thousand and again by next year. But I can't factor that in until we definitely have those funds, so. Again, I think letting it go for a cycle would be, uh, would make sense. So overall, it looks like, like I said, there's only six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar increase. Over what our um, estimated revenues are for F Y twenty-one versus twenty-two. But they're actually substantially higher, because again, and uh, the F Y twenty-one. Number here actually includes actual state aid, not our estimated reduced. Does that make sense to everybody? So this is the uh, the the pie chart, again, just seeing where you break down where our revenues come from. So if you take the levy, the, oh, it should say twenty-one, so excuse me, but the uh, the the levy limit sixty-two percent. Plus the school debt exclusion, plus the two and a half percent, about sixty-six percent of our, our revenues come from uh, from taxation. The next highest portion is state aid of uh, so the, the school aid at twenty percent and then general government aid of twenty-four percent. And I think people need to realize how large of a number that is, that we receive that much in state aid. And why it matters that we've been steadily declining on our net state aid because of the assessments. Our next highest is the estimated local receipts, and then you see they round out with the, um. With the enterprise fund and then available funds are down to zero and estimated new growth is less than one percent. So, and the the expenses, now on the expense side. So this is where I was talking about, these are the costs that the state hits us back for. We hit for tuition assessments for uh, charter school and school choice, which is increased this year, so it's. Three million, two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Then the uh, retired teachers' health insurance, they're in the, they're paid through the G I C, so we're assessed back. And then you'll see some of the other assessments that could be, uh, part of those are, um. Stuff like the GATRA and uh, mosquito control. Uh, overlay, that's uh, for, uh, that's what we budget every year, and that's for abatement, so that's basically a direct reduction. Of the um, tax revenue. So all those are called, considered recap items, so that equals out to a little over four point, five point four million. Health and dental insurance, we're having a very good year. Um, as I said, we support two point two five percent estimated increase, and we're hoping that it will, that will go through the general board. Uh. Retirement was up, uh, was up a high percentage, so uh. That's a, that's a substantial amount, we're still, we uh, working with Maya, we've uh, for the next two years. You know, uh, outside of, you know, you you have a new building or something like that. We're, we're getting uh, roughly two and a half percent increases, so we've locked in for those for. For uh, two years when they were going between six and nine percent for a while, so that's uh, that's very helpful. Um, life insurance, the Medicare, excuse me, so you're basically, that's uh, one, uh, the tax that you, we pay, if you will, into Medicare, so. One point four five percent of all our payroll. Life insurance, uh, veterans benefits, I don't think people know unless you you're you're receiving them, that the, what the town pays. Uh, about twenty-five percent of that is the consortium that we're a part of with Cape Cod. That allows us share veterans agents and Mr. Crockett comes, Croc comes in, um, a couple times. I think at two times a week, I believe he's in. And then roughly three hundred and eighty thousand dollars we pay out in direct benefits to uh, veterans within our community. You'll see the breakdown of the debt exclusion between principal and interest. Uh, then our regular debt, again, we hold a small amount of debt. Um. In a seventy million dollar budget, you'd probably be looking at three to five percent for debt payments, which would be looking closer to two. Two million to three and a half million dollars, so that's something keep in the back of our mind. That uh, you know, we are very low on our budgeted debt. Uh, school budget, you'll see that uh, we're, this is slightly, so there was an original request from them. Then a reduced request, this is a slightly higher amount, that's uh, that's in there when the final revenues worked out. Upper Cape Cod Tech, at the three point six million is a small reduction. There's eleven less Wareham students in there this year, and then the uh, general government budget. So giving you a change from uh, year over year, s- school and town employee benefits. Looking at three point five six percent increase, and again, most of that was the uh. Was the retirement, uh, obviously, because that's one with the uh. Over eight million of that being made out by the health insurance, that's why it says uh, three point five six percent. General government, uh. This is interesting, if you, if you see that line, three point, uh, you know, you'll see the increase in there. Um. General government for, so for three point three million, these are all the, what is funded through that town meeting. The selectman's office, order selectmen are unpaid positions, so you don't receive a salary. Uh, administration. Finance committee, finance committee reserve. Accounting department, the audit, assessing department. Treasurer collector department. General services, legal costs. Human resources, so personnel department. I T department, communications, the town clerk, elections. Planning and community development and sick leave costs, so. That makes up the, you can see where the other functions are of the, within the uh, town, but that makes up the uh, the most part of that. Uh, uh, of all our departments, so when you see that we have a thirteen million dollar budget. Only, uh, only three million of it is towards almost the, basically the general operations of the town. Um, you know, we'll go through, then you'll see the school, upper Cape Cod Tech, there's a reduction, public safety. That includes uh, police and inspectional services and the D N R. Uh, public works is municipal maintenance, the larger increase you see for municipal maintenance is. Uh, we're, we've increased by about seventy thousand dollars, who's one into their um. Expense line, as we'll be taking over the Stika School and those costs going forward. So for roughly a half year, I requested from Dr. Shaver led the cost, so that's why we have to build those then. If we didn't uh, remember to do that, it would have been a major hit to the department. Uh, health and human services, and then debt service, you see the the reductions, our debt continues going down. Uh, new school debt, and then our state and county assessments, so. All told, you'll see our expenses are two million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars. And again, the reason we can go, we can go with this is we did not fully budget. The um, the the state aid that we received, uh, and uh, for F Y twenty-one. So basically, that's carrying over to the next fiscal year. Uh, this is basically, we we just do this with the dollars, another show, it's getting late, so I'll move on. Um, this is a, the, when you see where our costs go, you'd see the school. Uh, upper Cape Cod Tech and then um, the, the debt exclusion debt, so we're, we're a little over fifty percent for the school department. Are, are, that's where the uh, costs go, then school and town employees is the next highest, which is uh, twenty-one percent. Then you've got public safety, ten percent. Uh, state and county assessments at eight percent. General government is at five percent. Uh, public works at four percent, and then goes to the smaller, um, the smaller sections that don't rate for a full percentage. So this shows where, um, some of the costs uh, went up over time, I think we basically. Went through this before, um. Our net state aid, last year, we actually, we saw a spike because our assessments went down. And our eight went up for the first time, but we're back down to uh. We're about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars less than uh, estimated, less next year than we currently have, so. And that, that negative trend's been, been pretty brutal, if you look at it, we're at uh. Almost two and a half million dollars less in state aid, net state aid than we had a decade ago. So that's a, that's a big hit to us. Uh, the, and then you'll see the total state assessments, roughly ten years ago, we are two million, forty-five thousand, and we're up to uh. Five, five million, ninety-six thousand, so over three, over three million dollars. And that's been, that's been one of the killers to us, obviously. So upper Cape Cod Tech continues a slow track up, and this would be a first year down, um. So. That, that hasn't been, although there's been an increase, that hasn't been one of the major factors. So this has not been updated, this is something we can go through at another times, I know it's uh. It's getting late, but this is what we uh, this is last year when we showed you, the first one was Wareham of just the average single family tax bill. Then the second one is the average single ta- family tax bill, including the, the Wareham Fire District, and then including the onset fire district. And it went on to show, uh, why would it matter, what could potentially, if we had the same average single family tax bill. Including the uh, highest fire district cost, what sort of revenues would we have additional to uh, provide, uh, bene- provide services to residents? Um, I think we'll stop there. And uh, that is the, that is the high overview of it.
Okay, uh. Turn it over to questions from the board, if they want to ask any at this time, uh, Alan. You can turn on your mic, Alan.
Not really, it's late tonight and it takes a little time to go through it all, and my only question for Derek would be, are we anywhere close to our max tax levy?
Oh, no, um. I mean, I think, I, I let me pull it up, I think you'd have to increase by about sixty, sixty percent or something like that, uh, you're.
That's why I'm asking, I don't think people realize that we actually could be taxing at a total higher level. That we actually have, many of the cities and towns are at that max tax levy, thankfully, we're not. Uh, we'll go through this later, I'll go through it, just a quick thing that the uh, state today. Uh, basically, one of the announcements was it'd be a one percent reduction in the twenty twenty-two budget only. It's good news.
Patrick. Anything? Uh, we'll go to Jim.
Yeah, just uh, piggybacking on, um. The Selectman Slavin said. Max tax levy, but we we charge. The maximum amount we can increase on an annual basis related to two and a half, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Judy.
Uh, no, thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan, nice job, and we will get a copy of that?
Yes.
Thanks.
Patrick, are you back?
Your uh, financial team as well.
Thank you, I'll let them know.
Thanks.
Patrick, are you back? Yep, the only observation I'll make is, you know, state aid goes down, state assessments go up. You know, we, we can tell which one is the subordinate government here. That's just the way it works. Um. So we'll, we'll delve into this, uh. You know, going forward a little deeper. Uh, we need the vote to hold the Springtown Meeting and the Town Election and to post the notice of intent. So I think I need to dig that up. So I can read it, give me a minute here. Back into the agenda. I don't print out all seventy pages for the meeting, so. Give me a minute here. Okay, this is the agenda.
Can, can we move on some minutes while you're doing that?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Uh, I move to approve the minutes of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, we were all present.
Okay, we have a motion, can we get a second to approve?
Second.
Okay.
Well, it was in favor.
Well, no, I gotta do a roll call.
You want me to do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Patrick? Patrick?
Yeah, we lost Patrick.
Peter?
Yes.
Judy, yes, four, zero, zero. Um, I move the approval of the executive session meeting minutes. And to hold them for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and again, we were all present.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve and hold both those minutes by Judy, seconded by Alan, uh, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick, you back? Nope, uh, Jim? Uh, Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four, zero, zero, so we've got those taken care of. Uh, I'll, I'll read this in in the form of a motion, this is actually the, the actual technical document that calls for. Both the Springtown Meeting and the Town Election, because oddly enough, if we don't call for them, they don't have them. The state actually gives us the authority to call for this. I can't imagine a circumstance. Uh, we don't want to mimic what happens in Washington, D C these days, so I can't imagine a, a circumstance where we wouldn't hold a town meeting and an election. We'd get into a lot of trouble. So anyway, Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen, fifty-four Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, oh, two, five, seven, one. Notice of twenty twenty-one Springtown Meeting and Town Election. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth Shire Town to either of the constables of the Town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and in accordance with the provisions of Division One, Article One, Section Three of the Bylaws of the Town of Wareham amended. You are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the Town of Wareham that the general business portion of the annual town meeting has been called by the Board of Selectmen to be held at. Seven P M on Monday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. And the election of officers will be held from eight A M to eight P M on Tuesday, May fourth, twenty twenty-one. The last day for submission of citizen's petition articles for assertion of the warrant is five P M, Tuesday, March second, twenty twenty-one. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, March second, twenty twenty-one. And you are hereby directed to post this notice upon the town's principal bulletin board on or before Wednesday, February tenth, twenty twenty-one. Here I fail not and make the return, new return of this posting with your doings there on to the town clerk. Given under our hands at Wareham this ninth day of February in the year twenty twenty-one. Wareham Board of Selectmen, Peter W. Titlebaum, Judith Whiteside, Alan H. Slavin, Patrick G. Chopiano, James M. Manise.
Second.
Well, somebody's got to make the motion.
You just said you read it as a motion.
Yeah, but that's your.
All right, I mo- I move it the way you read it.
Yeah, I don't want to be making motions, that's not my, not my yub, uh, Alan, you read the second?
Yes.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick? Nope, no Patrick, uh, Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, uh, this has to be, uh, I pre-signed it last week. I don't know if anybody else has been into Town Hall, but we've got to get three signatures on it and get it posted uh, tomorrow.
I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll be there too, because we got a lot of paperwork to catch up on.
Yep, okay, good, uh, then I will uh, let Cassie know first thing in the morning that you're coming in, and she can arrange for the constable to come by in the afternoon or something and post it.
Yeah.
We'll go from there. Okay, any other town business not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the posting of this meeting, Alan?
No.
Patrick? Nope, Jim?
No.
Judy?
You're kidding, right? No way.
Could happen.
No.
Myself, no, I suppose I should ask the town administrator. Town administrator's report, I guessing we had enough of him tonight?
We're good.
He's had enough of us. Uh, liaison initiative reports, Alan.
Well, as you know, the second Tuesday of the month is. Well, as you know, the second Tuesday of the month is my MMA, MSA, LGAC meetings, et cetera. But I'm not gonna put anyone through that at this time of night, it's probably worth over a half hour. I mean, the only thing of interest to the town locally is there's a, they're processing a bill for the town clerks to extend, uh, the absentee balling, which usually ends like March thirty-first for the elections for April. It looks as if a lot of the action, elections will be April, May, or even June. So therefore, there'll be a, a change for the absentee ballots to push it back to allow that to happen. Uh, I'll, I'll hit you next week with about a half hour's worth of stuff.
Everybody get their pillows.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, uh, Patrick, you there? Nope. Jim?
I'm good.
Thank you. Judy?
I'm done.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think I am too.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
We got six minutes.
That was quick. Motion to adjourn from Alan?
Second.
Judy, roll call vote, Alan?
Tell her yes.
Uh, Patrick, you there? No. Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Absolutely.
Uh, myself, yes, we kept it short of the hour of ten, so that's something, covered a lot of ground tonight. I hope we answered a lot of questions about the trash program and what direction we're looking here. And good night, Wareham, thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you.